Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I waved out him out of the school bus.
Okay, Stephanie, you're on.
Okay, welcome everyone to our county commissioner candidate debate. Thanks for joining us tonight. As many of you know, we are sponsored by both the Waukaicam County Republican Party and the Waukaicam County Democratic Party, working together for the good of our county and rural people everywhere. This event is also live streamed on YouTube and the channel is called Waukaicam R and D Team. So, welcome all of you out there on YouTube. I'm Stephanie Lights. I'm the principal at Waukaicam High School and a mother of four and registered voter here to moderate tonight's debate. Our panelists that are joining us are Dan Cothran, incumbent for position one, Mike Lowry Challenger. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim, let's start again. We have Dan Cothran incumbent for position one.
No.
We have Tim Lowry Challenger.
He's two.
Two, I'm two. Mike's one.
Dan is two and Mike is one. There we go. Okay, so we have Mike Backman incumbent for position one and Lee Tisher is Mike's challenger. We got that right? Okay, for position one. And then we have Dan Cothran incumbent for position two and Tim Lowry Challenger. Here are tonight's rules. All of the questions were submitted ahead of time in response to our request in the Eagle and online. There will be no questions taken from the audience tonight. I will ask a question, then each candidate will have two minutes to respond. With 15 seconds remaining, our timer will state 15 seconds. At the end of two minutes, our timer will state times up. I will allow that candidate to go ahead and finish their thoughts. The first candidate for each position to respond to a question will then have an additional 30 seconds for a rebuttal before we move on to the next question. If a candidate has any time remaining in his two minutes, you can go ahead and speak on another topic if you'd like. There will be no banking of time for later. I will rotate the order in which the candidates respond to each question and I'll do my best to keep track, so it's fair across the board. So, I think we're ready. Let's get started with our first question. This one does not have a rebuttal. It just gives each candidate two minutes to tell us all about yourself and why you are running. Dan, will you go ahead and start for us?
Yeah, I'll do that. Well, I've lived here all my life and I will continue to live here the rest of my life. I just built a new home out in the valley and I was actually the Crowns Underback camp that was out at Camp, the family camp. I'm back right there underneath duck creek, just below where we used to live when I was a little kid and we were one of the last families to leave the family camp when Crowns Underback dismantled that. And so, anyway, yeah, I'm back, back out there. Got my grandkids fishing in the same creek that I fished in as a kid, so made a full circle. And the reason I'm running is, as everybody knows, government, if you're in government, you realize that it's slow. My goal was to get the county solvent on the timber issues. I've accomplished some of that, but we got a big goal coming up that I need to finish. And that is a pilot project that the Cumberland's are trying to, we're trying to get passed with through the legislature. It's $28 million. With COVID coming in, everything got shot back. So, the coming session, we're going to be lobbying our legislative folks for that. And if we can't get that, then we would like to get the six million for the three counties, Pacific and Skamania and Waukaicam. And this money would come out of the capital budget to reimburse the counties for lost revenue that has incurred within Endangered Species Act. So, I would like to also with Puget Island, we have two flood control zones left to fulfill to get beach nourishment and I'd like to get that done in the coming years and also Gray's River and Gray's Bay, get some alleviation from the flooding issues that we have in Gray's River and maybe getting some of those channels cleared out for those folks. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, will you go ahead and take two minutes and tell us about yourself and why you're running?
Yes, I will. Good afternoon, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, my fellow candidates, and good evening, people of Waukaicam County. Even though it might seem that way, I'm not a carpetbagger as I was born in Portland, Oregon and been a Pacific Northwestern most of my life. I, like I said, I was born and raised in Portland. I went to high school in Spokane, Washington and then went on active duty and retired from the Army after 23 years. After retirement for the Army, I went to law school and I'm currently admitted to practice in five jurisdictions. After I graduated from law school, I continued on in public service with the Department of Defense, namely in the Department of the Army as in defense acquisition, developing budgets and defending those budgets to Congress. And so, I feel I'm distinctly qualified for executive and quasi legislative service in this county.
Thanks, Tim.
Now, as far as why, as far as why I'm running is when I, when I selected this place to retire to, I did it on a very exact basis because it was very boutique, very calm and very unique. But when I got here, I started interviewing people, you know, it should be the Chamber of Commerce, people in shops, digging. We're having some internet issues. And they voiced some concerns to me about how we're planning for growth, especially in terms of growth during COVID where we expect to have very, very significant migrations out of population centers to nice places like this. And so, what we need to do is be a little bit proactive about planning, not necessarily establishing draconian measures, but at least doing some planning, even though the county's not large enough to be required to do comprehensive plans or do some sort of plan, anyway.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. All right, Mike, will you go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us why you're running?
Thank you. This is Mike Backman. I'd like to thank the R and D team, Stephanie especially. This is a lot of work to get it in front of everybody like this. And it speaks volumes about Waukaicam that we work from the center. There's Republicans, Democrats, and I don't even know Stephanie, what you are, and that's beautiful that we don't know because it doesn't matter. When we work together as a group, that's what it's about, is working together for the common good. And that's what I bring. I'm an independent, but I'm a compassionate conservative, third generation commercial fisherman, third generation Puget Islander. Worked really hard from fishing. I've learned how to work hard. I'd like to thank the county residents for giving me the opportunity to do this job and I see, I see myself as a servant. I've worked really hard to work with the town, the port, the school, all those other entities to do the planning, to try to get right for this COVID stuff so we can go forward and become stronger out the other end. And I'm really proud of the fact that as a board, we work well together. We've had people compliment how well we work together as a team. That's me, Dan and Jean, you know, the fact that we can come to things and we talk about issues and we're keeping on issues and we're not fighting. You know, the national stuff is crazy. They don't, we live here, we work here and we live it. When you go someplace, you gotta own whatever you did. And I'm glad that we have a good board and I support going forward, doing, continuing the good work and I'm hoping that they'll give me the opportunity to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Lee, will you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running?
Okay, my name's Lee Tisher. For those who don't know me, I'm married to Diane for 47 years. We have two grown daughters and three grandchildren. I'm also a lifetime resident of Waukaicam County. A fun fact about me growing up in Waukaicam County, I actually attended three different schools, Naysale, Skamakwe and Keflin. I'm currently serving as a Port Two Commissioner on the Law Justice Council, Civil Service Board, Chamber of Commerce, the Broadband Committee and Waukaicam Dollars for Scholars. I served 16 years on the school board, served six years of Puget Island Fire Commissioner, Marine Resources Committee Board Member and a founding board member of Waukaicam Dollars for Scholars. Spent 28 years as a volunteer with the Puget Island Fire Department and I've spent over 20 years fundraising for Naysale and Waukaicam High School scholarships. Over $200,000 was raised with, for Waukaicam High School scholarships from the Rods and Reels Car Show that I started. During my time on the school board, I served as legislative rep, working with our representatives in Olympia. I was also selected to help negotiate the sale of parcel of school property for the new wastewater treatment plant. I have negotiated wage and benefit contracts for management and union employees. And I also feel that we need careful local planning as we grow, but at the same time, we need to fight from being overregulated. I feel I can be an asset to the Board of Commissioners and work as a team, attending to the issues that will benefit all Waukaicam residents. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. I appreciate all of you taking the time to introduce yourselves. The first question, the next question also doesn't have a rebuttal. I'd like to have you start for us, Tim. And the question is, if elected, what is one big goal you would like to accomplish and how will you make sure that it gets implemented? Tim, you're muted. We can't hear you. Do you mind being the one to start?
When I first got here, in my interviews with many of the citizens of this county, they, they raised too many concerns about where this county was going in terms of growth. And one of the initial meetings I had with the county commissioner, and I can't remember who it was at the time, was a certain land use issue with some person who had come down from Seattle to establish a business next to my neighbors. And that, that particular meeting was very contentious and, to be frank, disturbing. So, at that point, I said, well, maybe there should be some sort of, some sort of planning, some sort of, not necessarily, not necessarily draconian regulation, but some sort of direction where the county can go and in which to at least have an opinion on land use and planning. And so, that's, that's the direction I'm taking there and also a little bit of transparency because the people of the county have to be able to know what's going on and many of the, many of the counties that I've queried do have on their websites, budget exhibits, those type of things that, that, that the, the citizens of the county can get situational awareness on what's going on in their county physically, excuse me. And so, you know, my, my position, we need to continue going in that direction and provide these tools for the county executive and legislature to involve the citizenry in this process in terms of transparency and planning.
Thank you, Tim. Dan, will you go ahead and tell us what you, one of your big goals is and how you plan to implement it?
Well, the biggest goal is getting this pilot project, this 28 million. As I've stated and, and lobbied for, we definitely need more timber base here for the county. We don't have enough timberlands to sustain it. And as a lot of you know, this is 30% of our budget comes from timber. So, we need to increase that land base that we have and this is what we're trying to do with this pilot project, is to swap some lands out and get the county more timberlands to, you know, be able to survive into the future. We, the nature species locked up, you know, probably a little over 3,000 acres. So, with that, those are very productive lands. So, we gotta get that freed up. And my goal is to get this pilot project pushed through the legislature. It's hoping this year that we'd have, have done, got some of that done. So, I'm gonna need additional years since government moves so slow and with some key people in the legislature. I think that, I'm pretty sure that we can get this pushed through and get this county solvent. That is my goal, to make sure that Waukaicam County's future will go into the future wholeheartedly with revenue and a good timber base. So, that's, that has been my goal.
Thanks, Dan. Lee, will you tell us a little bit about your goal and how you plan to get it implemented?
I have many, but I'll touch on one. I plan to spend the time needed to assure that our roads are maintained and have the proper funding from the state to do that. With my background working on our county roads, I see that many have gone beyond the expected surface life expectancy, thus creating cracks in the service that allows water to go into the base rock and that results in uneven grade and potholes. Good roads are a benefit to all. Take Altoona Pillar Rock, for example. There are about 10 vacation rentals and bed and breakfasts out there now. These small business owners need a safe road for their customers to get to them. I will work with the Washington State County Road Administration Board and our representatives in Olympia to make sure that we have the adequate funding needed. That's one of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. And Mike, what's one of your big goals and how do you plan to get that implemented? Mike, you're muted. There you go. We got you now.
Is working with the, with the other entities to do economic development through the chamber, down for county and work on, working together with, to do economic development. That means internet, means maybe a coal lab, working with outside agencies to bring in more resources so we can use more grants to help fix up, you know, fix up the place, find out what we need, work with the groups, organize them so that we work together and find out what the citizens want and so that way we can then grow in a way that fits our community. We wanna, we need to be able to keep our youth. We need to have jobs, be able to have a decent school. You gotta have, want the good restaurants. You have to have jobs. You gotta have, you have to have some jobs here and we want to try to keep the place the way it is, but we need to get internet jobs and then we need to work with farms to help them go vertical so that they can make more money on the farms they do have. Those are the things that I'm working on and the way I plan on doing it is the way I'm doing it and that's working with the people and having meetings and, and being the one to go out there and actually organize them coming together and understanding that when you say you're trying, that you put the community, one community and you work towards the goal instead of working for the short term, you look at the long term and you're trying to get the people to come together and when they know that you walk the walk, they, they, they come to the table and they're ready to work because they can see that you're actually driving, not trying to get a small win, you're trying to get a big win, a double win, a win for everybody, not just for one entity. That's, that's it.
Thanks, Mike. All right, we're gonna go on to our next question. In this question, you will have, each pair will have an opportunity to do a 30-second rebuttal, the person who goes first. So, this is a two-part question. All four of you are running as independents. What does being independent mean to you and how can you be more transparent and accessible to your constituents? Mike, you've touched on this a little bit in the beginning, so I'd like you to start and then we'll go from there.
So, I'm an independent and I didn't even know the difference until I got here. I didn't, as a commercial fisherman, I just didn't, but I did. I just worked and went home and I, you know, and I didn't really pay attention to politics before I, before I joined. And as an independent, I am center because you work here, you gotta work, you have to, you gotta work across the table. So, here, it's about working together. So, I'm definitely centered, but I lean right. I'm conservative. By being paid by the pound, by fishing my whole life, everything came off the back of a fish. You had to earn what you did and so, I'm conservative, but I don't vote party lines. I vote what I think is right and I'm consistent and I've been consistent and I've stayed the same, you know, that integrity of saying this is what you are, you know, you know what you're doing with. I don't, I'm straight shooter with that. I don't play, don't tell you what you want to hear, I tell you what you need to hear and that's the honest truth and that's, that's what I do, so.
Thanks, Mike. So, Lee, what does being independent mean to you and how can you be more transparent and accessible?
Well, I've been very transparent and accessible through my years. As people that know me, when I was on the school board, I would get many calls from other board members' districts and they knew that they could talk to me and I would follow through on what they were, their concerns were. And as far as being independent in a small county like ours, we work for everybody. There's no, no right or, or left. I mean, you're working for everybody and I've always felt that way. I may be a lean conservative Democrat, but definitely work for everyone and there are no colors when decisions are made. That's why I'm running as an independent.
Thank you, Lee. Dan, what does being independent mean to you?
Well, it's, I think it makes it a lot easier when you go to the legislature, you testify and you're working with your legislative folks and you're not party affiliated. It works a lot better. I, it seems to me, though, that I found out, you know, you don't get that roadblock because you're maybe a Republican or you're Democrat or whatever. But if you're an independent, you can actually work with both sides pretty good and I think they feel comfortable being able to do that. And, you know, at this, at this stage in the game, you know, in politics for county level people, I think you should be independent because you're, you're gonna have to work with different, both sides. And I found with being an independent, I can work with both sides and get, accomplish what the county needs to, to happen. Transparent, I think everybody in Waukaicam County, I think I put my cellphone out there, so they've got an issue, they call. And believe me, I get a lot of calls and there's sometimes that, when I go fuel up, sometimes you just kinda, gotta take a certain time that you're gonna go, you go fill your rig up because even the wife has mentioned, man, where were you at? You know, you get tied up, people are asking questions and you're trying to fill them in and what really what's going on. And it's just, you know, I guess at this level, you just out talking to people and everybody has a value and, you know, something that they believe in and, you know, I gotta respect that. So, yeah, I, I feel that I'm transparent and we try to have meetings down on the West End and we can have it for those folks, spread it around a little bit. I love, I kinda like town halls. You know, if we got a major issue out there, I'll call a town hall meeting where everybody can get in and have something to say. So, I think that's basically been the board. So, yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, what does it mean to you to be an independent and how can you be more transparent and accessible?
Well, first of all, if you look at the voter pamphlet, I'm listed as without party affiliation, not independent, not Republican, not Democrat. What I didn't want to do was make enemies of all three of those particular groups in a very divisive environment that we have. I am a fiscal conservative and a social moderate. And what I don't want to do is alienate any one of the voters because of what they perceive as a political affiliation. Now, moving to transparency, transparency is defined as what the people perceive what their political services are doing for them. And this revolves around, you know, work products of the, of the county government, which in terms of, could be budget exhibits, it could be ordinances, it could be, it could be on the website, it could be, you know, what the products of the different departments are articulated as, you know, whatever their missions are, what are they producing for us? You know, what is their success rate? How are they, how are they obligating their budgets? That type of thing. Not only that, but what sort of access in terms of, of that is, are the public, what, what sort of access do they have to the decision making process of the county executive and the county legislature? Because it is a quasi-executive and quasi-legislative body. And one of the, one of the complaints I got from some of the constituents out there is that the, you know, the Tuesday meeting of the county executives was not, could not be accessed by working a member. And so, that's, that is definitely an access issue. And if elected, I would work to move that so that working individuals in the county could, you know, have access to that body. That's what I have.
Thanks, thank you, Tim. We are gonna move on to question two and I did not, we did not have an opportunity for a rebuttal on that question, but you will have that this time. And the question is, in this county, we have a problem with mill foil clogging up our sloughs and other waterways. I know I've picked it out of our prop multiple times. What is holding up mill foil removal? And what do you see as an effective, long-term, sustainable solution? All right, and so this time, Lee, I'd like you to start with that question and then Mike will have an opportunity to talk about it and then Lee, if you'd like a 30-second rebuttal at the end, you may have. So, go ahead, Lee, you have two minutes.
Well, I live on, on a welcome slough, so I'm well aware of the problem. The access in and out of the slough is impossible in low water. Our kids used to swim off of our dock and then we have a slide on the dock and they enjoyed it, but it's unusable now and we pay waterfront taxes, but our, the waterfront is basically unused. For years, this problem has come on. They, in the past, they dredged it once and that worked for a while. They sprayed once, but did not follow through. I know it's proposed now and Calis County is finally gonna come in and help and spray and then hopefully a follow-up in five years and eradicate it and the problem should be solved for years to come. Unfortunately, it took a long time to get the wheels turning in that direction. I'm glad to see that it's finally moving forward with the help of Calis County. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, what, what's your thought on the mill foil?
Well, I'm on the weed board and, and it's a volunteer board. So, it took some work to get that board back going. So it took some work to get that board back going, and then the county supported that work by putting money in the budget to be able to do the weeds. They actually had them, we put $50,000 into the account, into that, into that account, so that way we could spray the weeds when the time came. So, and I'm the one who got ahold of Calis to get Calis to come down and help us be able to get the process started. So I was the liaison between Calis and Waukegan. And it just, like Dan said, government moves slow. We're working hard, we've got, we've had to work with volunteers, you get them to come together, agreed to let an employee go that wasn't maybe up to, you know, we got lucky, that person went away. Now we've got a better person coming in that's gonna do the work, and excited about doing the work, and we did it without real hard feelings. We were, I know it took some time, but we, we did it in a way that we could feel good about it, and same for those people who were volunteers on that board. We worked with them so that they've could leave with great, you know, we were able to work together to be able to say, we understand, we thank you for your 20 years of service, but there's a time when you gotta pass the candle, and when they pass, when they pass the torch to the next person, and then we're ready to start again. And now we got some fire underneath of us, and we're ready to go, and we're working hard. We understand we're gonna do Welcome Slough, we wanna do Bernie Slough and Jackson Inlet, where we've helped with the, I helped map the thing, so that there wasn't just one area. When it first came out, I looked at what he had in plan, and I said, well, you forgot Jackson Inlet down, further down, and was able to help relap that map, so that way we'll, when we do get the thing, we'll be able to do more.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, would you like 30 more seconds?
Yes, the only thing I'd say in regards to the troubled employee, that the problem had been there for years. I just wish that it would have been addressed earlier, and the problem solved and moved on. I'm real happy that Andy Lee has stepped up now to take over. He'll do a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Tim, what is your thought about the mill foil clogging the sloughs and waterways? What's holding up the removal, and what do you see as an effective, long-term, sustainable solution?
First of all, am I not muted? First of all, I'm not familiar with the problem in the first place, but I am familiar with problems. So if it's a waterways issue that two counties are in, involved with, there's going to have to be some sort of investment on either county's part according to their investment in the situation. Not only that, but it seems like the state could get involved as well. So solving problems is, you know, like this, is a situation of, you know, getting all the facts and details involved, and getting all the stakeholders involved and together to solve that problem. So like I say, I'm not, I'm not particularly conversant in this problem, but like I say, and like the other candidates have said today, that it is a comprehensive and cooperative effort between all the players. That's all I gotta say about that.
Thanks, Tim. Dan, what are your thoughts on a long-term solution?
Well, we appropriated money for it, and I think Mike, I don't know what you mentioned, for a figure, I didn't quite hear it, but I think it was 80 grand that were dedicated for the mill foil. This has been an ongoing thing. A little bit touched on what you stated, Lee. Yeah, that was a slow process, you know, with the weed board, trying to do, you know, some restructuring there, and we couldn't keep people on. So it made it very tough to do that. You, you gotta be careful, because you don't wanna micromanage a group. You know, you, you kinda give them guidance, and this is what you need to do. It's the same as with the planning board, too. So we're dedicated to doing this, getting this mill foil, and the problem over there alleviated for the folks. One of the biggest issues is finding an organization aquatics to be able to take this on, and partnering with Calis. I think we're gonna, we're definitely gonna get there. It's just been, the biggest problem has been the restructuring of that, that weed board. So hopefully we got this behind us, and we'll start moving ahead, and we'll start working on that project. And I know this, our board is committed to make sure that we get something done there. So we're gonna be dealing with that and really forceful, so, okay.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, do you have a rebuttal?
Not so much a rebuttal, but just a comment that other players and other stakeholders need to be involved in this, if it's that big of a problem. State, other counties, and consultants who actually are in the business of doing these waterway issues. So that's all I have to say.
Can I have a second? Can I have a second?
Sorry, Mike, you can at the end, if you have, if you have time left over on your other, on the next question. Thank you. I'm sorry, we have to keep to, we have to keep to our structure. So our next question is, in this county, we also have a lot of unwanted animals that get dropped off wherever the owners think somebody might take them in, or sometimes it's up on the old logging roads. Why is there no animal control, and how can this problem be solved? And Dan, it is your turn to start first.
Well, the Sheriff's Department, you know, is our, basically our animal control, we got a contract through the Humane Society. And I think that got updated with the Humane Society. And yeah, there is a problem. I, at my other job, I run into that quite often, and it's, it's pretty sad. You know, find cats in boxes, you know, puppies being left. Yeah, I think that we're trying to get to Humane Society to help us out a little more, and I think that we got some commitment from them, and with the Sheriff's Department to be able to alleviate some of that, that, that issue. So really, you know, I can't say a lot about it. I mean, I live on the Locum and Valley, and I know that a lot of cats get dropped off out there, because there's a new cat every day, and they're usually at one spot down the road that they seem to, you know, to multiply. But I don't know, it's been an ongoing thing for many, many years, and I guess you just, you kinda try to control it, and you know, deal with it as we go. And folks, you know, people, if they see it, call, let us know. You know, we have public comment at the Commissioners' Meeting. If you see some issues that you wanna address, get on the line. You know, with this COVID thing, where, you know, we're doing the Zoom, and I ask for public comment every morning on the Tuesday to anybody that has anything to say to, to bring it up, and we'll definitely address it.
15 seconds. Thanks, Dan.
Oh, real quick, and those folks should be prosecuted if, if they're caught doing that.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, why do you think there's no animal control, and how can this problem be solved?
This is another example of the resistance to growth. Animal control is a fundamental function of the county. Requirements need to be determined, and then resources allocated against those requirements, and then the budget adjusted accordingly. We, we can't just put our head in the sand and wish it away. That's all I have to say about that.
Dan, do you have a rebuttal?
Well, I think we're addressing that, that problem. I don't think that, you know, we, it's not one of the major things out there that we're hoping to address. There is, that is a problem, but, you know, I, I think we're doing it the right way. And I think, like I said, the Sheriff's Department is overseeing some of this stuff. You know, we've had some cases with cruelty animals, and those things are, they're huge, and we're trying to address those. So, and, you know, it's back to prosecution again, you know, the prosecutor will prosecute. So that's, you know, in the handbag.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Mike, what, why is there no animal control, and how can this problem be solved in your opinion?
There, I'm unmuted, sorry. So first of all, it's in the sheriff's domain, so we gotta work with him, so that we're working with the sheriff to try and figure out how to go forward. Second, as a person just out there helping, I know I've worked with local community members and helped get cats fed. When you find places like out the Locum and there, by the barns, we've actually worked with the people to find out, you know, why aren't, and help them get corrected with people to get those cats fixed. They'll fix them for free if you, if you take them in, you take them in, but there's a program for it, and you gotta share that with people, and I have. I've helped, I've helped people out the Locum, and I've helped people on Puget Island, and I've worked with, like I said, there's a group, I'm not the leader of it, I've just helped. And I, and I took my part when people talked about what are they gonna do? I shared with them where they could go, and that they have people that'll take them to town and actually fix them, so that way they won't keep breeding. And the part about the weed board, we work together, and, but I'm on the Conservation District, and Conserva, Conservation District talked about grants available to help us fund that, and then the Dyking District talked about how they used a certain company, and they recommended it to us, because we're using that coalition, we're working together as a group, and that's how you solve problems, when everybody comes together to work towards finding solutions.
Thanks, Mike. So Lee, what are your thoughts on the animal control and how this problem can be solved?
I'm probably gonna mirror with Dan's statements. The Sheriff's Department does a great job of following through, but they have to be contacted to follow through on that, and we've had, like you said, we've had some big cases in the county, and I, I think they've been handled correctly. Teaming up with Calis, Humane Society is a great way to go. County our size, we cannot afford to have a animal control officer on duty. And so I think just working in the future with Calis County and running everything through the Sheriff's Department is a good way to go for the problem. It's not huge, but it is a problem, and it's a problem every rural community faces. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, do you want a 30-second rebuttal? No? Okay, thank you. So our next question, part of leadership, as we all know, is leading by example. Do you or do you not wear a mask when you are out in public and around other people? And do you encourage others to do the same as you do? So this time, Tim, it's your turn to start, and you'll have two minutes.
I wear a mask as a social convention, as a, as a microbiologist by training. I'm a little bit however I do wear a mask by training. And what I, what I do that for is to make sure that other people feel comfortable. Because in this, this day of COVID and such, we're taking a lot of divide, and it's a lot of uncomfort, a lot of fear. And so when I walk into a county Commissioners' Meeting, and two of the county Commissioners are not wearing masks, it really concerns me, especially when the door is covered with stickers that says, "You will wear a mask," and that's all I've gotta say about that.
There we go. Sorry, you guys. Dan, what are your thoughts on wearing a mask?
Well, I wear a mask, but I'm not gonna wear a mask at a meeting when it's just me sitting up there, and another guy six feet over here, and another one over here six feet. And, you know, people can't understand you with a mask on. I mean, when you're sitting there in a meeting, and I'm not wearing it. So everybody spaced out from us. But when I leave that room, I put that mask on, and when I go back into my room, I might take it off, or I might leave it on until I leave. When I leave that courthouse, that mask is on. It usually stays on until the car. So, yeah, and for me to tell somebody to, to put a mask on, I'm not, not into that. I really am not. I, I, you know, there's some people that's really down about this, and I don't really wanna offend them. I think by me wearing a mask, I think it shows that maybe they respect that part, that they'll put a mask on. I think that's more forceful than me having to say something to them. Unless somebody's parading around the courthouse not wearing a mask, I will definitely say something then, if it's in the courthouse, because those are our employees. And I would make sure that that person, you know, you gotta put a mask on. I would do that there. But for, without being in the public, no. That's, I, I'm sorry, I, I wouldn't do that. So that's being honest.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, do you have a 30-second rebuttal?
My only rebuttal would be that, like I said, the doors are covered with stickers that say, "You will wear a mask in this building." And so as a leader in the, in the county government, you have to lead by example. There can be no exceptions. When I was in that county Commissioners' Meeting, the sheriff had a mask on, I had a mask on, everybody else had a mask on. You need to set the example as a, as a county executive.
Thanks, Tim. So next is Lee. Lee, do you wear a mask? Why or why not?
Oh, we're very fortunate to, to live in a, in a community the size that we have here, and it's so easy to social distance. But I always have one around my neck. I have one with me all the time. Whenever I enter a building, and I know that there's not gonna be the distance required, I slip it up, and away I go. It's just automatic, and I think it's masker have been proven to help fight this COVID. So I definitely wear it, basically not to worry about myself, but others that may have someone that has an immune system that's not up to par, or an elderly parent at home. So, and being around the schoolchildren, driving the bus, I've always, always had my mask on around them also. So I'm a firm believer of wearing a mask, but then in a meeting where you're six feet apart and such, like Dan said, and even with people walking through the door, they're not gonna walk right up to you. I've been in meetings, too, where, where the board spaces around the table and not wear a mask, so. I'm definitely a firm believer in close quarters. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, what are your thoughts on masks, and do you wear one? Why or why not?
I wear a mask, and I also use hand sanitizer, and I have, I have extra mask, and I have extra hand sanitizer in my car, every rig I own. So that way, when I go out, I can wash my hands before and after I shop. I try to limit my trips. I didn't go to door. I felt that was inappropriate. I've, I've led by example. I, I believe that it's our responsibility. I understand that you, I know, I'm not gonna tell somebody else to put one on, but I'll walk away from you. If you're gonna come over and breathe on me, I'm gonna walk away, because I have vulnerable people in my life, and I, and I'm not doing it for Jay, I'm doing it for my mom, I'm doing it for my dad, I'm doing it for other people that I know in this community that are vulnerable. And you look at me and think, well, that guy looks big and tough, he can handle it, but you know what? You don't know my circle. And so I think of other people like I would myself, and I make sure that I'm keeping a distance, and I wear my mask, and I pull it up. I, and I didn't go, like I said, I didn't go to people's houses, even though I did the first time, I did the second time. I'm not afraid to knock on doors, but I'm not gonna do it during a pandemic. That ain't right, and I didn't do it. I'm proud to say that I put them before I put myself. I kept the people safe the best I could. I was the best example I could be. They didn't see me nowhere with no mask. They didn't see me do that. Everywhere I went, I was as cautious as, as an example as I could have been.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, do you have anything you'd like to say in your 30 seconds?
Yes, I did go out and door knock, but I was very cautious. I'd knock on a door, I'd step 10 feet back.
and people would, would come and we would talk at a distance and I'd leave a brochure with them. Anybody that had any signs on their porch that there, that there was immune, had immunity problems, I would not attempt to go there. A lot of places that had gates, I'd just leave the brochure and go about my way.
Thanks, Lee. Okay, our next question. People in urban areas may be looking at rural areas as being a favorable place to live and raise their children. What does our county need to do to accommodate for this growth while still preserving our rural integrity? And for this question, Mike, will you please start? You have two minutes.
So I think, again, it's about trying to attract the businesses that you're trying to bring in. And that's mostly internet style businesses. We need to try to get our internet up to par so that we can have people come in. We have to work together and until we can get our internet up to speed, we need to, we need to develop what's called collabs. So people who can work from home could go in and use that space to be able to be on the internet to have the same speed as they have in town so that they can do the work they need to do so they can afford to live here. I think that's first and foremost. And then I think it's important that we work on infrastructures like the sewer for the, for the town so that they can get affordable housing and get more people hooked on, more. They need to expand the sewer system so that way that we can have a housing here. So, so that way we don't, we have some kind of a plan going forward. So it isn't just houses everywhere where you actually have some planned grow. And I, I support helping the town get their sewer system expanded.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, what are your thoughts on, on growing yet preserving our rural integrity?
Well, being a lifetime resident, I really love our, our lifestyle here and, but I feel like we, we are gonna see a growth and it's with the troubles in the cities and such. And once we work on our infrastructure, get our roads up to par, get the broadband, we will hopefully bring in some families into our community that can work for home. As many businesses are realizing now that you don't have to pay the big money for a building on a corner and to get the same production from your workers, they can do it from home. And I think there needs to be careful planning in, in such that the growth is maintained to a level that will allow us to keep our rural lifestyle. We, we definitely need to expand the sewer and make sure the roads that are put in are put in, in the right areas, not just willy nilly here and there. So we can all work together and make it happen and we have so much to offer. I, I just see the potential for growth here. The big problem is if they have enough water, enough sewer and infrastructure to go forward. Thank you.
Mike, do you want 30 seconds?
Sure. So I'm already partnered with town. I work with Laurel, I've worked with Duncan, I worked with, we've had meetings, had meetings already in place to show, to build that bridge of that connection of, of working together with them and for the sewer and working with the cog and we're working not, we're working with the cog to find grants because we got a new grant person at the Council of Governments to be able to help them, be able to figure out how to get more accessible to get grants so that when we go out there, we're not paying for anything we're paying for saying what we're doing.
Thanks, Mike. So the next person to start is Dan. Dan, what does, what does our county need to do to accommodate growth while still preserving our rural integrity?
Well, right off the bat, we do have some of these folks that come into the community. Don't, my worst fear is, is bringing some of that mindset that, you know, that you left in the urban setting and coming to the rural setting. You know, we have a way of life here. We have a heritage, we have a history. And we wanna carry that on. So we gotta be kinda careful for the folks that do come. I welcome. We benefited by having some folks come in and with their professionalism and, and been able to do some things, volunteer for different groups that, that we've had and committees and to make our county strong. So I mean, I appreciate that part. But I know there is a mass, kind of a mass exodus, you know, from some of these urban settings. And we really don't have a land mass here to accommodate a lot of that. I mean, you're looking at almost 80% of Waukegan County is private timberlands. So you're pretty restricted on, on a land base to accommodate a lot, a lot of folks. You know, if you're, if you're looking at, you know, substantial numbers, there's just not a lot of land that is for sale. And people, when they come to the community, know where you live, know what the boundaries are and what the restrictions are in these different districts. Just don't come here and just see a piece of land. Check it out. Know if it floods. People choose where they live. And, you know, when things happen, they usually come to the county. Well, why did this happen? You know, especially with flooding issues. Well, it's always flooded. Well, I didn't know that. So, but we do get that quite often. So, you know, we're, we're pretty limited on, you know, things to, to take care of the folks. You have to take care of yourself out here. Like I say, we're rural. And there's times you don't have lights, electricity. You know, you gotta deal with it.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, what are your thoughts on what we need to do to accommodate growth while still preserving our rural integrity? Tim, you're muted. Thank you.
Like I said, my, like I said, my opening statement, I came to this, this beautiful place from an urban environment, which is Washington DC. And I'm here to tell you, in, in the environment of COVID and what's going on, riots in the Indiania City, stuff like that, the migration is coming and there's, we can't afford a caretaker mindset anymore. We have to be proactive in determining what sort of, I know the county's not big enough and doesn't have the growth yet to be, to have a mandate for a comprehensive plan and land use planning. But I think it's time that we in the county that are responsible for such things do the planning and have a construct that will deal with this migration so that we can program for the extra infrastructure. So for the diverse land use issues that are going to arise. And I think we have to have a, a innovative approach to this because if we just wait around, we'll end up like some interesting places in southern, southwestern Washington that are a little bit more populated than we are, like maybe a lot of you. So I want to preserve, I really want to preserve the beautiful boutique nature of rural nature of this community. But we have to address reality. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Tim. Dan, you have 30 seconds if you'd like.
Well, I think we're, you know, we're trying to address everything. We got the shoreline master plan that we've had a property rights group look over and we're, COVID hit and we haven't got to, you know, look at that a little bit more and get something passed, get back to ecology. You know, we get these restrictions and stuff, but anyway, yeah, there's definitely, you know, people are seeing Waukegan County, okay, this is a, you know, beautiful place and all that. But then I'm back to, you know, you're limited on where you live here. So I think there's some structure there that, limited structure that really won't happen because you don't have the land base to be able to accomplish that.
Thanks, Dan. Our next question. In this election season, there has been destructive acts of political signs, destructive acts towards the political signs or to the signs of our candidates from both political parties and also independents, which is probably the closest thing that our county has come to for violent, in thinking about violent or non peaceful protests. So what is the role of the county commissioner to help prevent non peaceful protests or other violence from gaining a foothold in our county? Lee, will you start with this question?
Well, there again, I think that would be a sheriff's office issue. People need to report when damage is done to their property. And I know a lot of people have cameras now on their property and are, we're catching a few of them and hopefully they will be prosecuted. As far as the protest, I, through the years, I've seen some protest in, in our downtown Catholic, maybe six, seven people holding the sign. And we are so fortunate to have that in our, our lifestyle here that it's unbelievable. So like I said, I think it, you know, if you have a problem with signs down on your property, call the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, what are your thoughts on, on the non peaceful protests?
I think they need to prosecute them. If it's non peaceful, that, that there's no lenience there. That's a sheriff's thing. You know, if they wanna have the right to stand, talk or, or hold a sign or even during a pandemic, it still ain't right. You know, if they're not, if they're not six feet apart, they ought to be spatial. You know, there's rules for, for businesses, there's rules for everything else. There's gotta be more rules for, for them too, when they go to do their, if they're gonna do the, go out there and protest so that they're keeping people safe. We're all, we're all packing, we're all, we're all out here together. And when they go out and go get double double like that, I've seen them, I don't know about, I'm thankful they're not here, but when you see the videos of Portland and those people are all on top of each other and you think, well, that ain't right. And the mayor should have, you know, should have been saying, hey, this is wrong. And those other people, they should have been, maybe they couldn't stop it because it's a wild thing, but they could have at least denounced it. They didn't even denounce it until after 100 days. That's wrong. And that, that party is off base. I mean, that, that's just not right. So anyway, I do think that it's a sheriff's thing. And if they do find people who take signs, they, they should do, I don't know. I don't wanna see them do hard time, but they ought to do something because it ain't right. People work hard to put these signs up and we all have a right to, it's our voice. You know, we go out and work hard to put these up and find places and whatever, and then they go out and take them. They shouldn't be looked the other way, but I don't think it's kids. I don't think it's just a handful of kids. I think it's people out there that are just a little bit off, you know, and it's too bad that it's such an ugliness out there that the people feel they need to do that kind of stuff.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, you have 30 seconds if you'd like.
Okay, well, if we're talking about the protests in the larger cities, I, I totally agree that the nighttime activities, the group that come out after the peaceful protesters go home during the day should be prosecuted to the fullest. And it should have been attended to in a hurry. I, I would have liked to seen buses come in and just round them all up from the get go to solve the problem. But like I said, we're very fortunate to have that problem here.
I'm sorry, I muted myself. What is the role of the county commissioner to help prevent non peaceful protests or other violence from gaining foothold in our, in our county?
Who was that question directed to?
Tim, it was you. I apologize for that. You have two minutes.
Okay, all we have to do is enforce the law. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. Destruction of property is unlawful. Rioting is a crime. Lawful protesting is not. And so all the, all the county infrastructure has to do is enforce the law. And that's what some of the larger communities like Portland, Seattle and others have not done for political purposes or, political purposes or otherwise. I think this issue right here is something that all four of us pretty much agree on. That to, to prevent these type of things happening, all we have to do is empower our police and enforce the law. Now, we don't have to incarcerate people who are, you know, coming together peacefully and holding signs up. I, I have no problem with that. That's a fundamental right under the Constitution. But as a lawyer, I can tell you that I'm gonna fully support law enforcement in this situation. It's not, not gonna be any defunding, there's not gonna be any, any shenanigans about, you know, emasculating the police force or the sheriff's force here. So that's, I, I think we can all agree on that.
Dan, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'd like to commend the Sheriff's Department because when all this stuff kinda really started hitting the news and Facebook stuff that was coming out there and, you know, we were being threatened with riots here. I was in contact with the sheriff and communicating with those folks on how we deal with that. So the communication was good with the Sheriff's Department. And I think we all agree, you know, if it's a, if it's a riot, you take care of that, you prosecute. And, you know, if it's breaking the law, that's, you know, they need to be held accountable for that. So, I mean, that's, that's just the bottom line. We're not gonna allow it here.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, do you have any last thoughts?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Dan, I'm not sure you got your, quite your two minutes. Did you, are you good?
I didn't, but that's fine. I, I think the, the point was everybody else, we're all agreeing, you know. I, I think everybody has the same feeling on this whole issue. So I'm, I'm fine with what I'd.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Also, Phyllis, when you keep your phone muted, it helps us a lot. I'm not sure why we're having interference, but we get quite a bit of it maybe due to the internet. So when you keep, when you stay muted until you talk, it really helps us. Thank you. All right, our next question. The Waukegan County Historical Society Museum is the only museum, the historical one in southwest Washington that does not receive government funding. Would you support county funding for the museum in the interest of preserving our county's history and promoting tourism through rotating exhibits? Why or why not? Dan, it's your turn to start and you get two minutes.
Okay, I full heartedly support the historical society. We've, we've given in the past, things got tight. I see in budget, they've asked for some money. I don't know if we're gonna be able to fulfill the, the whole amount, but I am very supportive of, you know, you know, helping them out. I, I think it all goes hand in hand. It's our heritage and our history that we wanna to keep and let people know this is what we were about. And I think we need to spread that and for people to come in and see those types of things that are down there. It means a lot. And I think that, you know, I, I think we can scrap something together. This tight budget, but I think we can scrap things together and anyway, I think we can, you know, help them out a little bit with some money to get this going because it is a part of our history and we need to fulfill that. And it's part of my history. I mean, a lot of stuff that I've done in the past is down there in that museum. So I cherish that.
Tim, what are your thoughts on the Waukegan County Historical Museum? Would you support county funding for the museum in the interest of preserving our history and promoting tourism through rotating exhibits? Why or why not?
I, I believe that a community's heritage should be preserved. a community's heritage should be preserved. I believe it. But I believe it's also the responsibility constituency decide whether they want to preserve it as well. And to have a vote on, you know, if we're going to fund this, you know, how are we going to pay for it? What sort of, what sort of requirement is it? How much is that requirement? And how do we plug it into the budget? And that's why I say that under, under the auspices of transparency, we need to show the constituency in the, in the county what we are buying. What is what line by line, how, how these budget lines are appropriated and how they're executed. And if they're not executing well, well, maybe there may be funds recoverable for funding other priorities like our heritage. And so that's the way I approach that problem. I do think it's important, but I think the constituents in the county need to have a say in it. That's all I got to say about that.
Thanks, Tim. Dan, would you like 30 seconds?
Yeah, we do have budget line items, reserve funds that are allocated for these different interlocal agreements that we can actually do those things. So there is a designated fund source that we can tap into and we'll be looking at those. So that's basically what I have.
Okay, thank you. Mike, what are your thoughts on the museum in Waukeaham County?
Well, I talked to David Olson, who's on that board. And I told him that, you know, budgets are tight right now. We're trying to figure out where we're standing because of the COVID and what's going on with, you know. But we definitely willing to look at it and to try to prioritize what is they need, you know, taking, you know, not just a blank check, but what do you really need? Make sure it's, so you're addressing the need. And then secondly, try to maximize the amount of outside funding that you can find. So in other words, what can you hold off on? Can we help find grants? Can we help find outside sources so we can not just take it straight out of the county's coffers, but get still handle getting the building up and the new linoleum or the new cases or, you know, the stuff that they need, but make sure it's in a way that we're not taking money away from, from, in a situation where we don't have extra to give. We make sure that we can actually afford to do it and then try to maximize it. So by using outside dollars through grants.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I believe the museum's a huge part of, of our, what makes our community great. It has to be preserved. I'm really happy to see some new board members on, on the board. And actually, I believe there's a grant writer or two within that group. So that's good. And I agree with Dan that the county should help when the budget allows to help them as much as possible. It's such an important part of our history that we have to preserve it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, would you like 30 seconds?
No, thanks.
No, you're good? Okay. So our next question. Since the Columbia View Care Center closed some years ago, there isn't a facility here in our county for senior citizens to go when they no longer are able to care for themselves. What action or proposal would you support to help keep our seniors in county during their sunset years? And for this one, it is, Tim, it's your turn to go first.
The care of seniors is, is important, but I'm not so certain, you know, I haven't really looked into this particular aspect. Being a senior myself, I have taken measures to, to make sure that I'm taken care of in my latter years. So I'm not, I'm not particularly schooled on what the alternatives might be. So I'll have to leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Dan, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I'm president of the COG, which is the AA, you know, for the aging. And, you know, we've got groups that are formed here to help with any, you know, subsidies that the folks need. And, you know, trying to help that. I mean, we, we do a lot. We have a group of folks that are volunteers that are on this. And we're trying to deal with, you know, with the elderly folks, which we have a lot of older people and I'm one of them, just getting there. And anyway, I, I can't say enough about the group of helping folks out that need to help, you know. Every little thing that, you know, if they don't have somebody there to help them, you know, somebody to overlook that there is like a case person to come out and help with that. For having a home set up there, I don't know. It's, it's a very costly business. The reason the one failed, kind of failed was, you know, it costs so much money to run one of those. So, and we do have a lot of folks that, that move out because they get closer to services, you know, in Cowalts County. And, you know, it's closer to the medical facilities for them to go get their treatments or whatever.
15 seconds, Dan.
So we have obstacles here, but we do have the aging group that we'll, we'll work with the folks. So anyway, you know, in home care type of issues and all, and all adult foster care. So those are things that, you know, that can happen for them. So we are looking at that.
Okay, thank you. Tim, would you like 30 more seconds? You're good? Okay.
In the final analysis, it all boils down to what is the requirement? What is the county responsible for in the terms of, in terms of elder care? Okay. And then you have to assign resources to those requirements. The county has to make a conscious decision whether it can afford those resources in view of other priorities. And so again, it goes back to the communication between the county executive, county legislature, and the people of this county. If they want to, if they want to assign resources to that requirement, then we should. If, if we can't afford it, then we have to think of something else.
Thanks, Tim. Okay. Lee, what are your thoughts on the Columbia View Care Center? And what do you propose to help keep our seniors in county all through, all throughout their sunset years?
We've had a few privately owned, the nursing homes privately owned, the assisted living facility in town is privately owned. And with all the state and federal regulations and the Medicare costs, the reimbursement to those places is so minute, it's just hard for them to stay in business. And I agree with Dan that we should, our main focus should be with the in-home care and making sure that the elderly are informed of all services that are available to them locally and help as much as we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, what are your thoughts?
I think you have to try to see if small business, if some business wants to come in, it's a business that it's, you can't legislate making somebody have a business. They have to choose to come down here. You can advertise that you have a lot of elders here and property is cheaper. Maybe somebody could pencil it out and move down here to see the need, but biggest thing is, is we need to support the EMS because as all these people are getting older, we have volunteer people that are that come into those ambulance rides. And we're going to be more and more ambulance rides all the time because we got more and more people that are vulnerable. So we got to support that part. And then I think we should support like more walking trails and things to keep you healthy longer. And then let them know that we have the on the move and we have the Medicare rides both. So then again, like they have all that information, what's available to them and how to keep them healthy as long as you can, so they can stay here as long as they can. And lastly, maybe try to figure out how to do where they have multiple people in one house, kind of like you see they do where they have house sharing, where they have, so that you can stay in your house. You could have more people in the one house, have mixed housing where people can stay together, try to organize that so that the people can, through the health department, maybe so that multiple people in one house instead of having one person in the house, some, sometimes they'd be able to stay longer if they had simpler, had more people in their house. You know, try to help organize that.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, you have 30 seconds if you'd like.
Yeah, our EMS levy is up for a vote and I would encourage everybody to vote in favor of that. It's so important out here in the rural area. And buying life flight insurance are very reasonable. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Okay, our next question is, it's another two-part question. What campaign promises have you made during this campaign season? And when it comes time to adopt the county budget, how will you attempt to fund all the promises you have made? This is Mike. It's your turn to start.
Thank you. My campaign promises to work hard and I get paid by the month, not by the hour. That's how I'm going to fund it. I work hard, I work, I work with other people. And we're, yeah, that was my promise. My promise is just to be out there and keep leading. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, what campaign promises have you made? And when the time comes to adopt the county budget, how will you attempt to fund those promises?
Promises I made is to work in coalition more with the Olympia to get more funding for our area, for the roads, for everything, work with Dan to secure our timber revenue. And that's how I see going forward. As far as promises, that's basically all I've made, work hard and to work with our representatives to secure more funding to help our budgets, to keep the services we all are accustomed to having here.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, do you have a rebuttal? No. Okay, all right. So Dan, what are your thoughts? What are your promises you've made and how are you going to fund them?
Well, I think they're out there in front of everybody. My goal is to get this $28 million pilot project passed through the legislature. And that is the main goal right now. But I do have another one. And it was brought up the other day and it has to do with erosion issue on Puget Island. We've got to be able to have that as those flood control zones designated as disposal sites. It costs the county a lot of money. We're over $200,000 in just for the, you know, the Cape Horn and Pancake Point, you know, done. And it's just, we can't keep incurring those costs. So having them designated sites, that is a goal. We got to keep pushing and get that and we won't have those costs. So those are the two things. And the main one is to getting that, that timber base for the county. I've been at it a long time to try to get that. It's been an uphill battle, but we've had some pretty good movement in getting that done. And that is my goal to get that done. And also get on a, on a plan that we have continual beach nourishment for the folks at Cape Horn and Puget Island, and also working in the Grace River. That is another priority.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, what promises have you made and how do you plan to fund those?
My promises, my promise is involved in making sure that that budget is requirements based. That means that every line item in that budget has a requirement linked to it. And so that we get every drop of blood out of that budget we can. Step two is to make sure that the county is planning for growth to build, to build the tax base, timber industry notwithstanding. And I think those particular efforts will actually generate revenue. And so there will be no extra revenue needed.
Thanks, Tim. Dan, do you have, you have 30 seconds if you'd like.
Well, you know, we could raise the taxes up and on all the folks and it's still going to accommodate for the taxes that are actually needed, you know, to fulfill anything. So you, you know, that wouldn't be something that we'd want to do. We haven't done that. And we've always kept our taxes low for the, for the folks. Got to think.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Our next question is another two-part question about healthcare. In our county, we have great response times to fires and power outages. But what could be done to improve our ambulance services when volunteers are in such short supply? Also, what can you do in the next two years to improve our in-county healthcare services? And for this question, Lee, will you start?
Yes. We have to try to recruit more EMTs. It's tough when years ago, the majority of them worked in town when the Siren sounded, they would all have permission to leave their job and run to the ambulance. But now most people are working out of town. We need to find incentives to recruit more EMTs. What was the second part, Stan?
The second part of the question is related to our, just our healthcare services. So what is the, what are some ways, if you were elected in the next two years, that you would work to improve our in-county healthcare services?
We'd have to make sure that we have the care that's provided to us now. And we were fortunate to have them come into the community. We, we must work with them. The building may need some repairs in the near future. We need to make sure that the building is sufficient for all their needs. Very important to keep their health services here local. I don't know what we'd do without them. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Mike, what are your thoughts on the healthcare in our county and how you can help improve that?
We already gave them the bill, we already gave them the building, but just keep working with them. And our health department has a good relationship with that, with their board at the clinic and just promote that they keep working together. And then hopefully, I don't know, that's a tough one because you got to find small town doctors. You got to find somebody who wants to live here. It'd be nice to have a doctor like Mr. Avalon. We miss one, Mr. Avalon. You know, we had somebody who knew you when you came in. They've had a lot of change over there. I'm not saying it's great, but it's better than nothing. And we got to build on it. And we're appreciative that we do have one. But yeah, it'd be nice to some local, if we could help get local, you know, kids that grow up here to want to come back, you know, give, start promoting that as, as they're educating them out and trying to find grants and help them when they go off to school. So they might want to come back, you know, plant that seed. On the EMS, I'd say vote, vote for them. And they have a good time, their timing, you know, even though it's, like you said, it's all volunteer. They came to help my mom, God bless them, 15 minutes from the time I called, they were in the door. And, you know, that's amazing. It takes that long to get over town just driving, you know, that's just you go by yourself. They managed to get two people in the car, get in that ambulance and in our driveway 15 minutes. So I can't say enough for them. And I think that, you know, if we worked and maybe we talk about using the Johnson House or using something like that, I think we could find a way to help partner with some bigger communities to have EMSs. Because what happens is we train people and then they can go off into these bigger places where they get paid, where they're volunteering. Program where the people come here, stay here, get some hours training in and then go back on to wherever they came from, but stay here while they're getting trained so that we get practical use of them.
Time's up.
I agree with you, Mike. For, for the limited number of people we have able to help in that area, they do an amazing job. So it's how do we help, help them by having more people and, you know, how can we improve? And, you know, how can we improve those healthcare services? So, yeah, definitely, they do a great job. So, Lee, do you have anything you'd like to add to what Mike said or to rebuttal?
No, I think we covered it.
Okay, all right. So next is Tim. Tim, what are your thoughts on ways to improve our ambulance service with increasing the number of volunteers? And what can we do in the next two years to improve our in-county healthcare services?
Well, I think the bottom line with all of this is that we're not gonna solve this problem with this discussion. What happens to happen, what has to happen within the county government is to do the due diligence, do the analysis necessary to find out what's required. And then if you don't have the resources to fund that, we have to be creative and figure out how we can adjust in the future. Now, in the last question, I made the statement that we have to increase the tax base, not increase taxes. And that maps to increases in EMS infrastructure that will result from growth in this county. And so until the analysis done, we're just, you know, like, you know, it's all just a what if trial. So I think the cognizant thing to do is that analysis so that we can predict what's going to be required at a predictable growth rate, which we already have. I mean, I went down to the courthouse the other day and talked to the people who deal with billing permits. And in two thousand, between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we had a thirty-five percent growth in building permits. That's a larger tax base now. And so as long as we can do that analysis, then we have a little bit more clear idea of what's possible as far as the different types and flavors of infrastructure that are going to be required at the county.
Thanks, Tim. Dan, what are your ideas around improving the in-county healthcare services?
Well, I think that, you know, it's good to back with the schools, getting maybe work source and maybe having some paramedics, EMTs go to the school and kind of recruit some of the younger folks. That's what happened with my son. He's a paramedic firefighter. Very young age, EMT, you know, back in the days, you know, he was out there. That's a field that he, you know, decided to do. He works at Calwitz too, but he was also, you know, he was here at the fire department. And he was here, he lived here. He no longer lives here now. But I think you need to be able to go to the schools, try to recruit some of those younger folks. EMT, start out with that and see if they're interested in pursuing that field. And with the clinic, you know, we worked hard to keep that clinic here. It was part of that. We got a lot of kickback. County, you know, put a lot of money into that and into that building down there. And Lee brought up some points, yeah, there, you know, we had to do some maintenance on that. And we've gotta definitely keep that and making sure that, you know, the people use it. And also trying to recruit a doctor, it's very hard. Mike brought that up. Yes, it is very hard to recruit somebody for a small rural community. But, you know, we just gotta keep thinking out of the box and, you know, be able to try to do those types of things and get that. But I think it goes to, you know, trying to recruit from within. And we do have some new folks here, belong to the fire department. And, you know, it's, we're getting an aging group, so it makes it very support and encourage the folks and advertise.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, you can have thirty seconds if you'd like.
No, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have one more question, and then you will also have an additional two minutes to give us your last thoughts and what you want everyone to remember you for. So here's the next question. What will you do to get affordable, high-speed internet into every household and business in our county? There is some discussion that county commissioners are essentially powerless to affect these decisions that are instrumental to our county's future well-being. So, Dan, will you go ahead and start on this one?
Well, we're working with the PUD. Mike, I think he's a, he's the lazy one for that. And, you know, from the start, we're looking at grants and any way to accomplish that. Where I live out in the local, you know, it's a hit and miss satellite. I mean, it's not easy. And there's a lot of other folks that are the same thing. Sometimes it's nice. But, you know, really, you got a business, you definitely need this. And I think the county, if there's any way, and I think we're looking, you know, working with the PUD to be able to pursue this and looking at grants and different things and anything that we can sign on and help with that. It's a much-needed thing for our community. And I think that we're doing a pretty good job. And I think Gene Healy from the PUD and Mike, I think they're doing the best they can do with this thing and just keep working on it. And we'll see what happens and what else we need to do to accomplish that.
Thanks, Dan. Tim, what are your thoughts on what you can do to help us get affordable internet into every household and business in our county?
Every household is a tough call. My broadband internet will be hooked up on the fifth of November. Why isn't everybody else's? And so what we have, again, we have to do the analysis on the different locations within the county, be it the island, be it over on the west side or north, as to what are the barriers to broadband? Whether it's infrastructure, whether it's some sort of geographical thing. I know the island's a challenge, but each one of these, each one of these locations need to have a particular characterization of what their problems are so we can more clearly articulate solutions to these problems. Now, obviously, the Alugamin Valley Road area doesn't have a whole lot of problems because the vendor that's hooking us all up, are hooking us all up. So I think it's important for us to do this analysis and evaluation and figure out what the county can do, both process-wise and perhaps grant or, you know, financial incentives for broadband offers. And then present that to the constituency and see what they wanna do about it.
Thanks, Tim. Dan, would you like thirty seconds?
No, I agree with a lot of that.
Okay. Mike, what are your thoughts on getting every household and business high-speed internet?
So, I think, do we need to, well, well, so I'm working right now. We helped the PUD, we gave them seventeen thousand dollars to help get that grant to do the study to be able to show they needed the internet, which is part of the state, you know, be able to show the need. Secondly, we're working right now with the CARES money to be able to help with the infrastructure to have a high-speed internet from the school all the way down to the port. And we're working with all the entities so that way the county is gonna be the one who puts in the infrastructure. And then the entities are gonna pick up the monthly bill so that we're doing it as a true partnership. So that you'll have places you can go and have free internet for two hours, fast internet for two hours a day. And then you can pay for additional. But, so that gets a start. So that way, if nothing else, you can be someplace and have the access to it. And then, lastly, we should be working with our legislators to make it so that way the internet is looked at as a utility so that they can actually bill for it. Right now, we've had to do all the legwork and then they gotta sell after the PUD puts in the fiber all the way out to your house. And then when you wanna hook up, you gotta go to an internet company. And so they can't recoup their money. They only can rent out the line, they can't rent the service. So we gotta get that rule changed so that in rural places, it's the, you know, I don't want government to compete with business, but if business isn't gonna pick it up in places where they don't pick it up, you need to be able to have the rules changed so that you can. So that way we can have the service. PUDs are here forever. Ports are here forever. Counties are forever. They could bill it out long and get their money back and actually be able to do it if they could sell the service. That's how you get water, that's how you get electricity. Internet's just as important as those two in today's economy.
Thanks, Mike. Lee, what are your thoughts on getting high-speed internet to everybody?
Well, I know the legislature, that's one of their top priorities. And with the COVID now, it's just a proven fact that the rural students struggle with the online learning. As you know, Stephanie, a lot of students are sent home packets because they do not have the adequate internet. I really am appreciative of the efforts of PUD and the county commissioners for fronting the money for the study. And Steve Carson for grabbing the ball and running with it too. He's providing internet services right now to many of the valleys out there that wasn't there before. And so things are moving forward. And I can see where ninety-five percent of the homes are gonna have twenty-five Migs or better eventually. But it's gonna take a little time and everybody's working together as a team. And it's gonna come together. And once it does, it'll change our, change our lifestyle here immensely. We'll be able to promote living wage jobs for people that can work from home and raise a family, so that'd be great.
Very true. Thanks, Lee. Mike, would you like thirty more seconds?
Yeah, two things. One, you need to have some kind of a collab so people have a place where they can go to do this work off of the street if while they're waiting for the internet. And two, I had it, the internet. And working together. We have to promote working together because that's the only way it's gonna happen.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, so our last question, our last opportunity for you to speak tonight is please take two minutes and summarize what you want our audience to know about you and your positions on issues. And we will go ahead and start with Lee Tisher.
Okay, I'll start with, I have years of experience serving on many local boards, problem-solving, working with budgets, negotiating contracts, organizing projects and events. I'll be able to devote all my time and attention twelve months of the year as the job requires today. I'm willing to spend the time needed to work with our representatives in Olympia to secure funding to keep the services we're all accustomed to. Working hard to fight one-size-fits-all regulations and unfunded mandates that put more burdens on all our whack-a-coming taxpayers. I look forward to working with the other two commissioners as a team, listening to opinions and options before deciding on an issue, weighing in if I felt it was good for the county and how it would affect the people of the county before that decision was made. I have volunteered forty years for many organizations and events, always promoting Makaycom County as a great place to visit, raise a family, start a business, to live and to retire. And I have created events and projects to attract others to visit Makaycom County and spend money here with our local businesses. I will continue to fight to keep our rural way alive with planned growth and a voice for all to retain the services we need here. And most of all, be a voice in Olympia to fight those unfunded mandates. I pledge to serve with the open door and open mind. Stay focused on the issues that matter most. We need to be strong in Olympia so we could be strong in Makaycom. I would appreciate your vote to represent you as your District One Makaycom County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Next is Mike Backman, incumbent for position one. Will you tell us, take two minutes, and tell us what you'd like us to know about you?
I'd like to thank him for the opportunity to serve first and foremost, and then I would continue to do the work I'm doing. I would, as a coalition builder, working with the town, the port, the PUD, working with the school, working to try to do economic development to keep the lifestyle that we have, to be able to grow this community in a way that keeps the atmosphere the same, but yet keeps living wage jobs so we don't lose our kids. We have to have, you have to have young people to be the EMSs and to do the work around. We can't have everybody be retired. So we have to have jobs to be able to keep the youth here. We have to have some development. And I will work hard to keep doing that. And I will be lead by example of working well with other people. And I'm I guess the most important thing is, is I have integrity. I say what I do, I do what I say, and I'm not playing. And you know where you stand. And I think that's very important at a time. This job is about, people understand who you are and what you're doing. I think that that means a lot, and I can't say that enough.
Thanks, Mike. And Tim, who is running for position number two, will you go ahead and tell us, summarize what you want our audience to know about you and your position on issues?
I think it boils down to is that as a member of the legal community and an educator, I have distinct and profound insights to how things are supposed to work in an organized system. When it comes to modernization and when it comes to growth, I have experienced at the national level in making sure that that growth and that progress is rational and affordable. So I think that as we go forward in this, many of the concerns have been voiced by many of my colleagues in this forum have been about how requirements are determined and how those requirements are accepted and resourced. And I think I bring a very, very cogent talents and abilities against those problems. And so I think as we go forward, that these will be very important. And I look forward to serving in that regard.
Thank you, Tim. And last, we have Dan Cauthren, incumbent for position two. Please take two minutes and summarize what you want your audience to know about you and your position on issues.
Well, I could tell you that I'm a straight shooter. And meetings that I go to and some of the places that I've had to go and work on different projects, people know that I am a straight shooter. If you don't like it, then you counter it, you let me know. And you can see if you can change my mind. I'm, you know, I'm up front. I love this county. And I'll do everything in my power to make this county strong and prosper into the future. That is my goal. I need additional four years to get what I need to get done. Like I said, government is slow. I had never intended to stay this long. But there is some unfinished business that I've got to accomplish. And I've worked really hard on those issues. And I'll continue to do that. I just, the resources and the environment that it's here in Makaycom County, the wildlife, there's reasons we live here. And anyway, I wanna continue that. And I know that a lot of folks that I talk to, they have the same feelings that I have. You know, we wanna live free. I've seen so many freedoms that we don't have now. My kids, they don't have a clue on what some of the freedoms that we've lost. So I wanna be able to make sure that the kids that grew up in this community see the same thing that I got to see when I grew up. And we're doing a lot of those things. We're doing things in our streams out here that we're working on. Getting the fish back, the wildlife. We got hit hard with the hoof rot. And hopefully for fishing game.
Fifteen seconds, Dan.
And a very advocate person, you know, not agreeing with a lot of stuff that Fish and Wildlife does. And, you know, they needed to change some ways. And so anyway, I'm just asking for some additional time to get things done for Makaycom County. And if we can do that, we'll get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. That concludes tonight's debate. I would like to thank everyone for joining us. I'd like to give a big thank you to our four candidates. We have Dan Cauthren, position one, or position two incumbent. And Mike Backman, position one incumbent. And then we have challengers, Tim Lowry and Lee Tisher. And Mike Backman, position one incumbent. And then we have challengers, Tim Lowry and Lee Tisher. So we appreciate all four of you being here and sharing your thoughts with us. We'd also like to thank the Waukeaham County Democratic and Republican Parties for hosting this debate. This is the final debate of this election cycle. We hope and expect to be back in two years for the next cycle. This YouTube recording will remain online until the election is over. And the channel is called Waukeaham R and D Team. So please vote. We ask that all of you remember to vote and encourage everyone you know to vote. Your ballot should be in your hands. And remember, they are due November 3rd. So thanks again to all of you. Have a great night and stay safe.
Thank you all.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much.
Money on the team.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
And have a great night.
Okay, I'm gonna turn off the YouTube in about 10 seconds.
I apologize, you guys, for getting your positions. They were in the wrong order on my paper. And once they're in the wrong order, it's really hard to get them back in your brain. So thanks for helping me out and bearing with me. I appreciate it.